Good evening, everyone. I'll call the regularly scheduled September 13th School Committee meeting to order at 6:00. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ware, if you take role?
Akira Thompson?
Here.
Colleen Marcus?
Here.
Nancy Farrell?
Here.
Kathy Levers?
Here.
Diana Coyne?
Here.
Bill Garvey?
Here.
Mayor Ray Kell?
Here. Our student representative, our new student representative, Sarah Devian, floor is yours. Is that green?
This is green. This is not green. I'm Sarah Devian, and I am a senior at West Springfield High School. I want to start off by saying, I will be in attendance and council before the scheduled deadline last Friday. There we go. The new freshmen seem to have figured out the building, which is great. Fall sports have successfully kicked off their seasons with a gold card fundraiser which ended last Saturday. Teachers and staff have done a great job of implementing the West Side Way into their class introductions, and most students are successfully following the four pillars of the West Side Way, which include acting with integrity, showing compassion, learning resilience, and striving for excellence. And groups like Key Club and National Honor Society have once again teamed up with the West Springfield Lions Club and other biggie events to bring volunteering opportunities to the student body. The school-wide student government has already started planning for homecoming, which is coming up in October. The Class of 2023 Student Government is hosting a car wash on September 24th from 12:00 to 2:00 at Clark Field. The STEAM program will begin on September 26th in the high school library. This program runs right after school ends and gives students time to complete homework and/or participate in fun activities. Students from the high school were able to attend the largest job fair of the area on September 8th at Storleton Tavern. There was a great turnout at the Senior Sunrise Event on the second day of school. The high school was awarded state funding to support 25 paid STEM internships, which is an amazing opportunity for students to gain experience in their fields of interest. And our friends from Springfield High School's sister school in Italy started their first day yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the school committee? Seeing none, move on to subcommittee reports. Ms. Marcus?
I just want to take this opportunity to say that I had the opportunity to go to many of the open houses, elementary school open houses, and it was wonderful to see students and families filling the building, bursting with energy. It was just so exciting to be back to semblance of normalcy in the schools. And I just want to also give a shout out to all the teachers and staff for the incredible job they have done, not only just these past two years, but in preparing their classrooms for the return of students and to a new school year. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we have, speaking of our Italian sister city, we have them here with us tonight. So we'll have our Vice Principal of the High School, Maria Silvestri, come up, and then President of the City Council, Ed Sullivan. What? Yeah, I don't know what this means. So President of the City Council and President of the Sister City Committee, Ed Sullivan.
So, is this on? Can everybody hear me? Usually I have a big mouth, so I don't need it. But anyway, so everybody's probably wondering what I'm doing here, but as the mayor indicated, West Springfield does have a couple of sister cities, Valdano, Italy, and Dingle. And West Springfield is part of Sister Cities International, which is, as it indicates, is an international organization. It was started by President Eisenhower in 1953, actually started on 9/11. To, his thought process was to have people learn about other cultures, engage each other, and that would lessen the risk of world wars and conflicts. So that's how Sister Cities International came to fruition for anybody who wanted a little history. So I'm here today as President of the West Springfield Sister City Organization, and it's with great delight that we have our friends from Italy here. And some of the programs that they did Zoom throughout the year with the exchange between the Italian speaking club and also their group there was amazing for anybody who had the opportunity to watch it. So what I want to do now is, and before I turn it over to Maria, I do want to say that the Sister City programs start and always end, but continue and are ongoing. It always starts with the kids, whether it's the Dingle, Ireland program, the one in Valdano. It always starts with the kids, exchanges, and that's what grows and perpetuates it. So it's really, really important that we have them here, and hopefully we'll alternate years and send our students there maybe next year. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Maria.
Thank you, Ed. Buonasera. Good evening. So this is a culmination of two and a half years of working with our friends in Italy over Zoom. You know, at the point where they were supposed to come and visit us, the pandemic hit. So we've been communicating over Zoom. They've been, we've been exchanging a lot of academic projects, et cetera. So we are thrilled and excited to actually have them here in person with us and to have their students with us this time. So they're going to be spending a couple of weeks with us. We've learned a lot of differences between our school system, their school system, et cetera, and it's been a lot of fun already. And I have to give a really big hand to my Italian students because we sent them out to the halls of West Springfield High School, and we haven't lost a single one yet. So we are thrilled, you know, they've been managed to, they've been able to manage that. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce the Vice Principal, Lucia Bellacci, and two teachers that have come over with her is Lisa Barbieri and Marco Prina. So Lucia, if you want to come up a second. And I don't want to forget to say, the other folks that are in the background here with us are our host families, and we're so grateful to them. They have kind of adopted our Italian students and have really brought them all around town and just have really enjoyed them. So we're very grateful to them as well. So I'm going to be quiet, Lucia, and hand it over to you. How about that?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good evening. So I'm Lucia Bellacci. I'm the Vice Principal of the Institute of Valdano in Tuscany, Italy. And I am extremely overwhelmed to get the opportunity to address you all at this meeting today. My colleague Marco Prina and I were invited to this very place two years ago as special guests. And your welcome induced us to think that nothing would stop us from reaching and achieving common goals together. And until we met our first obstacle, and it was a major one. The COVID crisis had an unprecedented impact on our lives, on our education system. And we learned a lot from it, including and especially that social relationships and the sense of community are important. And because we had set goals for our cultural exchange, we strived to achieve them. And it was, we overcame all our obstacles thanks to the hard work and commitment of our teachers and our students. And thanks to the support of the administration. They were always with us. We felt their presence and... So we met every week for two years online with our American, so with you. And we worked on common projects, and it was a really great achievement. This meeting today marks a new phase in presence. And I would like to thank, first of all, and on behalf of our school and our principal, the administrators, who were the first to support us and made us realize that we would do it and be able to start this project. And then I would like to thank all the teachers for their hospitality and the wonderful American families who are making our students feel part of their family. And I'm sure they are proud to be part of such an elite institution. Needless to say, we are also looking forward to reciprocating. And we already started to plan together with our administrators and teachers and staff your visit in Italy, hopefully in the spring. So I think it's cool for now, and if possible, we would like to have our students introduce themselves because I'm sure they are eager to do it and voice their presence here. Thank you.
So as the students are coming up, I just want to tell you how many teachers are actually hoping to turn Italian so they'll be invited on that trip over in Italy. So come on up. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I am Teresa. I am 19. I just graduated in June, and so I'm starting university in October. And I will study law, and I am very excited about this opportunity to be here because it was all shuttered down due to COVID, so it's very great to be here. And I want to thank you all and also the families to host us and make all of this possible. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Giovanni. I live in San Giovanni Valdano, a small city near Florence in Tuscany. And I just graduated from my high school in June, where Teresa graduated. And once I come back from this trip, I will be attending university in Florence. I am really glad that I was able to come to the USA because it has been my very own dream since I was little. And seeing my dream become reality has really become something important for me. Thank you all.
Hi, I'm Giada. Good afternoon. I'm 18, and in Italy, I study computer science. In September, I just started my last year of high school, and I think next year I want to go to University of Computer Science. And maybe when I'm graduated, I want to start to work here for my job. I don't know. I am so honored to stay here and thank you for all for the hospitality and for the beautiful school, and thanks.
Hi, I'm Leonardo Carusi, and I study at the Itis Valdano School. And I'm studying electrotechnics. I finished my third year, and I'm really grateful to be here. So thank you all.
Good evening. I'm Cassandra. I study health by technologies. I'm really happy to be here. It's really good so far. I've been so good here. Everybody is so, it's amazing, and everybody is so nice, the teachers, the host families, and everybody. And this is a really great experience, and I thank you all.
Hello, everybody. My name is Martin. I'm a student at the technical institute, Itis Valdano, where I study mechanics. I am really happy to be here, especially since it's my first time in the US, and it's an incredible experience so far. I really hope I can come back here one day because I want to study university here. I'm glad to meet you all.
Hi, I'm Zeno. I have 18. So for me, it's like a dream to be here, so I have to say thank you, and I'm so glad to be here. And thank you for the support.
Hi, I'm Arby. I'm 18 years old, and I study information technology at San Giovanni Valdano High School. I'm very happy to be here and I'm glad to meet you, and I hope I'll have a great time in the US. Thanks.
So thank you to all of them. They've done a great job. Just for a little bit of extra information, they are actually in classrooms, and they're taking exams with our students, and they're participating. So they're really getting enculturated into our academic world. So the other piece that they have for you is a short video. Is that ready?
Yes.
Okay. Just to introduce you a little bit to their school back in Italy.
Okay.
Okay? So just a little taste of Valdano for you. We're going to culminate this week for them with our superintendent. Dr. Perone is going to make them pancakes, which will be a new experience. And we really, all of us, want to extend a special thank you to Mr. Danby. He's been phenomenal and so supportive of my driving him crazy, coming in and saying, can we do this? Can we do that? And all of that kind of thing. So thank you to all of you, and we're just enjoying them. We really appreciate it.
Anyone have any questions from the school committee? Ms. Farrell?
I just wanted to say how impressed I was with everyone's English speaking ability and when they came up to the speaker, what a wonderful job everyone did.
Anyone else? Ms. Coyne?
I think I just, of course, grazie to all of you who made it over. I know some of you were up 40 hours when you first got here. It was a very long journey. Grazie to all of the host families. I know I got to sit and meet some of you, some I know. And to all the teachers and the support, I think it just shows, one, how small the world really is, how connected we all are. I am half-Italian, even though no one would know it by my last name. My family, my mother's family is from Calabria. Meeting all of you helped reconnect me in a way to my own Italian roots. I'm so glad you're here and can experience what we have to offer here in the US. I know you will have a wonderful time, including the pancakes. And, you know, I think I just want to reiterate, it is about our global nature to the world. We are a part of something bigger, and you are helping to connect all of us with that and we to you with that. And thank you, and grazie, and have a wonderful stay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Marcus?
I just have a quick question. So when the students introduced themselves, many of them spoke about their focuses, information technologies, or their focuses. So when they enter high school, do they select a path, or how does that work for them?
They select a path for the first two years. The first two years are safe for every student in our school, and they choose their path. And so... We have different specialization, electronics, ICT, mechanics. We have chemistry, biochemistry, and they represent many of our specialization. Okay, so this is how it works in our school. And they are attending their courses here according to their specialization. Okay, so Leonardo here, for example, is attending robotics classes because he's going to specialize in robotics in Italy.
Anyone else? All right, before, we're going to have you come up real quick, right in the front. We get a picture, and I got some pins for all of you. But I just want to say, on behalf of the city, thank you so much for making this happen. Now, Mark and Lucia, we did Zoom calls back before Zoom was a thing in January 2020, and who knew? I should have bought stock then. But seeing you come visit in February and being able to keep this together over the past two years through the pandemic, and finally bring the students here and make this partnership a reality, I deeply appreciate your efforts to it and making everything happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll come down right in front. All right. When they clear out, we'll do a approval of the August 26, 2022 minutes. So I have a motion? Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve open session minutes from August 26, 2022?
Second.
We have a motion. Any second, any addition, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Superintendent Perone's report, personnel introductions and opening day.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And I know in the packet was shared with you the personnel report for June 13th to September 16th. And I don't know how much you want to talk about that other than the fact that it reflects resignations, retirements, and new hires for the 2223 school year.
Any questions? What's that?
It's been a dynamic year.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'd also like to introduce Dr. Valerie Fenn. She's the interim Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, and we wanted to introduce her to the school committee formally and give her an opportunity to share a little bit what she's been up to since we hired her in the summer.
Sure. Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Dr. Perone and everyone, for inviting me tonight. So just a little bit about me and my background. I was a math teacher primarily from middle school for about 10 years in a very diverse, large urban district. And then I went into administration as an assistant principal, starting in a district about the size of West Springfield, which was appealing to me when I applied. And then moving on to a principalship and director of pre-K 12 academic intervention for 52 schools in a large urban district. And then my last position was with a collaborative where I oversaw professional learning services that were fee-for-service for the local 25 school districts. Educator evaluation, our grants management, and our new school programming. So when I came to West Springfield, I was really excited about all the wonderful things happening in this district, truly. And I was immediately drawn to the diverse populations as well. So when I first came on board and, you know, continuing to the present, I've been primarily working on the implementation and support for our new curricular, high-quality, evidence-based curricular programming evidence-based curricular programming across the district, starting with, for the most part, into reading at our elementary schools. Also, at our high school, illustrative math. And at our middle school, looking at robotics and potentially expanding robotics across the district. The, the goal really in my support is really based upon, first and foremost, providing every single learner, meeting every single learner where they are, and accelerating their learning to grade level and beyond. And then, secondly, of course, supporting the professional development and expertise that the teachers need to implement new curricular programming, you know, where they feel they need professional learning, and just supporting them in general. And the third component of my support is really around helping to ensure and develop communication plans to help building leaders with their messaging around their programming. So I am delighted to be in West Springfield, and I really value tremendously the collaborative spirit that I've encountered. And I'm excited to come into district every day and to go into schools and come back to central office and work with the colleagues and coworkers. It's just been a fabulous experience, and I say that, you know, very sincerely. So I look forward to moving forward. And certainly, with all of these kinds of transitional periods and changes, we have challenges, unforeseen circumstances, and sometimes obstacles. But I feel that we are off to a great start, and we are going to look back and, and truly be very confident in the way that we've moved forward. And not everything is always going to run perfectly, but I think that we're going to see how well we've done at the end of the year, and we'll be in a really good place as we move forward with all of the things that we're doing in the district.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none? Oh, Ms. Farrow?
I was just gonna say, welcome to West Springfield. Look forward to hearing what you accomplished this year during this position. And I can't wait to hear about the math at the high school.
Oh, that's right. She used to be a math teacher.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I was gonna add, I can't wait to hear more about the robotics, because I think that'll be super exciting as well. And, you know, certainly with everything at the high school that's going on, how that could feed into that, you know, I know it's the club, but it's just, you know, it's, it's so important, and it feeds right into all the STEM and math and science and creativity as well. So there's so much to it.
It's really about, well, as I said earlier, meeting students where they are and then accelerating their learning. But today's environment requires us to provide as many pathways as students need to succeed in life. And so, you know, that is a component of that, that, you know, we really have to be accountable for providing for students to ensure their success.
Any other questions, comments? Yep. Neil?
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, it's been such a wonderful start, and we give Dr. Fen a lot of credit for that in terms of how she's been able to come in and, and really grapple with some, some big-ticket items. We have a pretty significant year ahead of us, and, and we're just so, so impressed by the manner in which she has come in and is conducting the work. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Opening day.
Opening day. So I want, do want to piggyback a little bit on what Dr. Guille said, because when, when Dr. Fen and Val, if you don't mind, when Val came on board, she joined our team and complimented it and really helped us get ready for a challenging year. Granted, there's a few interims around, but we're gonna do the best we can do to show that we're ready for the job and ready for the roles. I say that because one of the things that we did, and we talk about opening day, but opening day doesn't just happen on that first day of school. It happens throughout the summer as we plan and we program and we develop interventions and plans and ideas for how we're gonna kick off a new year. And one of the things that we did was we worked initially with the administrators in July, thinking about what the roles and responsibilities were for them, and how those roles and responsibilities generate expectations for them within those jobs that they have. And one of the things that we, as a group, determined and that we heard loud and clear from, from teachers last year, we did a survey at the end of the year, and we asked them to provide us with their thoughts, their ideas, their concerns. And one of the things that we heard was, and this one hit us right between the eyes, was that we need to set expectations and reset expectations that had been pushed aside by the realities of COVID. And that really resonated with us, and it resonated with the principals. And they were able to think about what they do every day, day in, day out, and really consider thoughtfully and purposefully what expectations they need to set for themselves, how they need to communicate those expectations to their, the people that they work with, to the people in their building, and also to the students. Because that's really what we're, we're missing. We're students not understanding what the expectation was for behavior at lunch, for behavior in the classroom, for behavior at recess. They forgot how to be kids outside playing together. And so, we as a group, as we met with the principals and then met with the teachers, set the same, had the same conversation. What's your role? What's your responsibility? What are the expectations that you have for yourself that you need to hold yourself accountable to? What, what roles and expectations do you need to set for your students in their class, in the hallways, as they transition, at lunch, et cetera? And there was an energy that really came from that simple message that we collaboratively agreed upon, and then communicated quite clearly with teachers, with parents, with students. And the piece that's really, I think, important is framing those things, roles, responsibilities, expectations, with four Cs that we've talked about: communication, collaboration, community, and compassion. And when we start thinking about those things in those terms, it really helps people wrap their heads around what they need to do, how they need to do it, and in which roles that they, they, they are, how they have to enact them. And that's really what we've done. And that's really what opening day was about. And there was a, there was really an excitement, and I think Colleen talked about that at Open House, an excitement of people as they came into the building. And granted, there's a lot to be excited about when you go into Coburn, right? It's a brand-new space. But I, I felt the same excitement in Fozzie, and I felt the same excitement at Tatum. And as I visit classrooms, and I visit buildings, and I talk to kids, and I talk to teachers, and I talk to administrators, we all acknowledge that there's gonna be challenges, there's gonna be difficulties. But if we can keep those things in mind, that we have a role, we have a responsibility, there's expectations that are set, communicated, understood, we hold people accountable to those things, then we're in a better place, and we can kind of capitalize on that excitement. We can capitalize on that energy and really push it forward. And that's what I felt on opening day. And I don't know, I know you all haven't been in buildings yet, but I encourage you to visit, to come and interact with the teachers, with the principals, and most importantly, with the kids. Because that's where our, what's that? That's where the magic happens. I wish I said that. But anyways, that's the opening day that, that I wanted to share with you. I don't know if you have any questions specifically or generally, but I'd be glad to answer any that you do have.
Questions?
I have one. And I, this resonates with me. It's actually kind of interesting, because I, I had a conversation with a parent recently in terms of how expectations had been sort of put to the side during COVID, and they, you know, felt that it had been a detriment, I think. So I think it's important that the, that resetting of expectations is out there. I guess my question to that, and, and this is always something, you know, anyone that's in the work world hears this, how are, how is everyone going to be held accountable? How will that follow up cadence occur? How will that be measured as you move along through the year?
Sure. And, and so I guess my answer to that question is, you know, when I think about myself, my role, my responsibilities in this interim superintendency, I'm accountable to you for the job that I do. I'm accountable to the administrators for the responsibilities that I owe them as an evaluator, as, as a person who's gonna observe and work with them as they develop goals, as they generate artifacts. I'm gonna be the one that's gonna provide feedback to them. So I have a responsibility there. So I'm gonna hold myself accountable to, to them and to you in the role and the, the responsibilities that I have. And I've asked everybody to kind of trickle that down to, all the way to the classroom level, to the students. And so, how are students held accountable? Well, they, as long as they understand what behaviors are expected of them, then it's an easy conversation to have with little Vito, that rascal, about when he is acting inappropriately, how we can redirect him to the expectations that have been set. So I, I would, I would argue that the teachers are held accountable by the administrators and the expectations that are set. The students are held accountable by the teachers in their classroom, by the administrators in the, in the lunchroom, et cetera. So accountability is built in to the system. As long as we are cognizant of those expectations and we've clearly communicated them, we hold people accountable consistently to them.
I just wanted to say, as a parent and as someone who's been in, well, Tatum and the middle school so far, if they are, from what I've seen, doing a great job implementing expectations. I mean, the kids came home with the first couple days with, you know, this is what we're doing, and they, you know, it's elementary school, they have like a word that they have to do and all the steps. And I just think it's a great, seeing it, you know, a nice start of the school year that's normal for them. And it's like going back, and they were actually excited to be in the class. And I think they're doing a good job. I mean, it's two weeks in, so I'm hopeful. It's, it's very good so far. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kira. And, you know, Sarah, Sarah spoke to the, the West Side Way. And those things are expectations that are set for the kids at the high school level. And when you have a, a senior leader, athlete, student athlete espousing those, those criteria in, in this forum, it, it shows that we're working in the right direction. It's not perfect. You know, the wheels are gonna come off, we know it, they are. But we're gonna put them back on, and we're gonna keep rolling.
Bill?
Thanks. One thing, I was able to attend opening, your opening remarks. And, and again, we've had the discussion about setting expectations, resetting expectations. I think we've probably had that discussion for 18 months, waiting for kind of like whatever the new normal's gonna be. And, and obviously, the start of the school year is for that. But one thing that, that did kind of strike me, and it did, it took me a little bit to kind of get it, walk it home, was the, the personal responsibility part. Because I'm used to setting and, setting expectations for whether it be a department or a management thing of, from a top-down kind of thing. And, and maybe those ideas are top-down ideas, but, but if you're gonna get accountability from those expectations, it needs to be a two-way. And what really impressed me is the one, and I think you spoke to it, that there was a question of what does a central office team do from teachers? And that, and what a place to start, I thought, as a way of personal responsibility, that everybody from the central office team define their roles and their responsibilities and things like that. So, so I do think, to me, that's what struck me differently. Yes, there needs to be this, you know, yeah, when, when push comes to shove in the classroom, yeah, there needs to be that kind of top-down thing, I think. But this, that's what struck me differently, and, and I, I liked it. I thought it was just a good, and that's, I think, how it is gonna work, is personal responsibility is, is the way the whole thing will work fine, right? So I think it was just a great way to, to start out and demonstrate that. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, Bill. And, and just in quick response, that's what this country was founded on, right? Everyone wants to think about their rights, but they forget about the responsibilities that balance those rights. That's what this is all about: rights and responsibilities.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Seeing none, I will say, I was at the Coburn opening, and it was, I was nervous. It was very smooth. It was very smooth. So, I know half the parking lot's not done yet, but despite not having the parking lot, things went very smoothly. So, great job. And speaking of facilities, move on to Neil.
Excellent. Thank you.
Assistant superintendent.
So I had a couple talking points this evening, just talking for, talking points or updates, excuse me. I wanted to start with giving an update regarding the elementary feasibility study. A couple weeks ago now, the PCC met and interviewed three finalists for the feasibility study. This is the company that will come in and ultimately assess each site and determine what is in the best interest of the district and for that site relative to our future plans for the, for the buildings. That being said, after those interviews, the PCC was charged with ranking the, the firms from one to three, and they voted unanimously six oh, or six zero. Number one was Kalo in Beaneck, number two was Drummy Roseanne Anderson, DRA, and third place was TBA Architects. So, any questions around that?
Ms. Farrow?
For the feasibility study, it's just the elementary schools. So are they only looking at Tatum, Fozzie, Mint and Egg, and Ashley? Is, I assume Coburn is not included in the feasibility study?
Correct.
And I would assume that Memorial, since we're adding on to Memorial, Memorial is not included, so it's just four buildings?
Correct. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
We, Doug and I spoke briefly in the back that we might have them, depending on what their scope looks like, also just look at how the middle school's set up and what the steps would be to get that other pod online, if we wanted to have that as an option. It's just because Memorial's basically been taken, it's done, pretty much, they're building it out, just to see if, how it would weigh versus adding on to the other schools. We're just awaiting their fee proposal right now. Yep. Ms. Levers?
Do you have a timeline on when it's gonna start, when they expect it to be done? The study?
I feel like there, there was a couple conversations about that, but nothing was set in stone. I felt like the next step was to come to an agreement around the cost of this. Once that was agreed upon, then the firm would provide us that timeline. But I felt like it was even relatively quick, right? Four or five months, maybe? Is that?
They said they would begin work immediately once, you know, the, if, if their proposal is accepted. And four to six months, but it could be as quick as four months.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Next on the list is just a quick update about the Coburn building project. Much concern around the parking and traffic flow immediately, initially. After the first day, we, we did some de-escalation and worked through it. Teachers did great, staff did great, community members in that area were very accommodating, and, and really, it's been smooth sailing since then. So that's, that's going great. Finishing projects, we're, we're down to the wire. They are working on their punch list, which is basically their list of items that they need to revisit in the building. They're going through, through that list, addressing those, checking those off. Teachers, staff, everybody are going through the new train, the training of the new systems. That's anything from badges to IT, the touchscreens, alarm systems, security, et cetera. And on Saturday, the old
Saturday, the old, the remnants of the old Coburn will be, will be gone. And they will then begin the next phase of turning that into a parking lot. They are still on time with respect to end of November, beginning of December for the kind of unveiling, if you will, of the parking lot. So things are progressing along quite nicely. Next on the list, the summer work projects. Talked with several principals and they were most impressed by the work that folks had done over the summer months, prepping buildings, getting all facilities up and running and prepared for another start. I've been working closely with Ben Paquette, can't thank him enough for his collaboration on making sure those items on the list are being addressed. And lastly, Christine Beaumont, kudos to her and our local departments, the fire, rescue, police for reinstituting the security and safety teams. We've already met once or twice to discuss getting back into regular routines with addressing our safety protocols, addressing security concerns. So, that's it on my end.
Any further questions? See none? All right. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Go on to new business, MASC superintendent search, Glenn Kuchar. The floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here with our field director from Western Massachusetts, Liz LaFond. She is the person responsible for member services here, and I work with her on many of those initiatives. So Liz will explain what the superintendent search process is about and how we may be of help to you.
Yeah. Hi, thank you for having us, Liz LaFond. I am located up in Hatfield, so very close. It's always a pleasure when I can work anywhere that's not a far drive. Karen and I have been pretty well-connected for many, many years, as Nancy and I have been through various conference attendances and such. So thank you for having me, us. The chief and I, I usually, when we're together, I just sort of stand back and let him do the talking because, well, he's the boss, right? That's what you're supposed to do. I think we've been together so much lately that he's all talked out and he said it was my turn. So thanks for having us. I know Karen sent out our sort of standard proposal to you all this afternoon. And I want to just hit some highlights for you. And if you have any questions, you can feel free to interrupt me along the way or pull them till the end, either way. We've covered the introduction piece. I know that you've done some initial work with the job description. Am I? Thank you so much. I don't want to start messing with your equipment. I have a way of breaking things. So we're an association that exists first and foremost for school committees. That's our role. Whatever your need is, that's what we exist for. And in this case, it's superintendent search or possibility of helping you conduct your search. It's something we do each and every year. Our team partners together so that we, sometimes we get rather busy in superintendent search season. And our team partners together and helps one another to make sure that everything that needs to happen, happens. All the boxes are checked. So from time to time, we fill in for one another. It might not always be me. Glenn likes to have the opportunity to get out to Western Mass and interact with folks here because he spends so much time in the Boston area. Part of our search service includes, well, in essence, it includes everything you need. But we start at the beginning. We work with you through selection of a search committee, if that's what you choose to do. A lot of committees choose a search committee that's representative of the community and the schools and includes school committee members, which we would always recommend. Some school committees choose to have a subcommittee of the school committee serve as the search committee, and that's permissible, as long as it's a subquorum of the full body. We would come in and help the school committee to develop a brochure, if one hasn't been done already, that sort of highlights your community, your school community, and the good things that are happening here. That talks about the characteristics and qualities that your next superintendent will have. Once we have all the information that you'd like to have in that vacancy announcement, we send it off to our graphics designer, who makes everything look beautiful and ties it in a nice bow, comes back to you to look at, to make sure it's something that you would like to have. And we begin to announce the vacancy. We put that up on our website, the MAS-S, the Superintendents Association website. We post it nationally through the National Superintendent Searchers website. And it would be posted on your website. Many school committees have moved away from advertising in print for a couple of reasons. Well, print, folks are more readily accessing things on the internet, right? So if somebody's looking for a superintendent job in Massachusetts, they know to come to our website or to the MAS-S website. That's where they're going to look for job vacancies. And the cost of placing large ads in national publications or publications that reach the Northeast is really expensive, as you might imagine. But the committee certainly may choose to do that. And should you choose to do that, we would assist you in placing those ads and get them placed quickly, knowing the purchasing process can sometimes slow things down and then bill you direct. We would assist you in planning a timeline for orienting your search committee, for getting those semifinalist interviews conducted, and for then planning forward to having the finalists come to you, helping to coordinate site visits, both for the finalist candidates to come to your district and for you to visit candidates' districts. There can be a lot of back and forth there. It's important to have a point person in the district. Typically, we keep the chair of the school committee or vice chair, whomever's identified, updated on a regular basis about what's happening. We communicate similarly with the chair of the search committee, so there's never any question about where we are in the process or, you know, if any members have any questions that they want answered. We're here on the ground with you. It's actually a pretty exciting process. In the beginning, it's time-consuming paperwork-wise, but once the candidates start coming into the district, it really becomes very exciting. Well, for us, and I hope for the committees that we work with. You do have our sample contract. I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it. Part of what we do, once the search committee is established, is we would hold a series of focus groups in the community with your various stakeholder groups. Parents, students, of course, teachers, administrators, both principals and district administrators, usually separately, just so that folks, we want to have as many sessions as we can, so that folks feel free to offer their input into what they believe are the characteristics and qualities of the next superintendent. We provide you with all the feedback we've collected. We also offer an online survey option, because families, as we know, your largest stakeholder group, don't always have time to attend an hour session in the evening or the afternoon to provide their input. We get a lot of feedback that way. That's all, would all be provided to you uncensored, uncut, so that you know what folks are thinking. We have a large network of organizations that we interact with, including local universities and colleges. We provide, to the degree possible, links and communication with those groups so that they would be aware of the vacancy. We would send the vacancy out to DESI's Influence 100 cohort, which is an initiative on DESI's part to sort of diversify the upper-level leadership in school districts across the Commonwealth. We would collect all of the application materials for you and ensure that applicants who expressed interest do complete the process. Sometimes it can be time-consuming, making sure that they've provided everything that you require that they provide. So, when, once the application period has closed, we would do, we would provide the applications to the district in whatever way you chose. If you have a search committee, however that's formulated, we could bring all of the applications to you, have an executive session meeting where those applications would be vetted to determine who would be interviewed. The initial semifinalist interviews would be conducted in executive session as well, because folks at that level, that initial semifinalist level, have a right to privacy. Many folks may not have told their employer yet that they're seeking new employment. But once finalists are selected by that search committee and presented to the school committee, everything happens in open session. We will talk a lot, both with the committee and with the search committee, about open meeting law and public records and what can be accessed and what can't be accessed. Again, we're here with you every step of the way to be sure that the process unfolds the way you want it to fold. What works uniquely well for West Springfield, that's what you tell us, and that's how we make it work. And I guess, one important piece that you'd like to know, is that the cost for that entire process, regardless of what time it takes, or how many meetings we schedule and attend here, is $9,900. And that would include all the staff, labor, consulting services. There could be some incidental expenses, such as travel. If you decide to have things printed and sent out, which is, I guess, one good thing that COVID has left us with, we're all a little more familiar with accessing things online, and so costs have come down with regard to that. In any case, if there were additional expenses, they would not exceed $2,500. And I think I've hit the highlights, unless you all have some specific questions that you would like to ask of either one of us.
So we had already done some preliminary work in terms of a superintendent search, thinking that we could do it ourselves. And then maybe we became a little bit overwhelmed by the process of it. So we had put together a brochure, and I believe it's on your website, and it's also posted on SchoolSpring and on the West Springfield Public Schools website. So do you think we should, I don't know if you've looked at it, would your suggestion be to kind of take it and maybe look at it again and see if we needed to revamp it at all in terms of the brochure that we had?
I think, I think we would, we would look at it, but absolutely not. If you're happy with it, then there would be no reason to revamp that.
Okay, see, we maintain a list of 1,300 individuals who are interested in the superintendency or who work with people who are interested in the superintendency. And we reach them electronically. Very few people are using the US mail now. Everybody in the United States who's looking for a superintendency usually goes to the State School Boards Association's website and the State Superintendent's Association's website. And we post those positions for you, and it costs you nothing. The same way, if you decided you wanted something printed, the cost of printing is negligible. Many districts, while they'll stick with electronic transmission in total, may want a couple of hundred brochures just to have on hand if someone's looking for something, a hard copy, and we can print those for you and get them to you in black and white or in color.
You mentioned another additional expense of travel. You mentioned another expense as travel expenses? What does that compile?
You may wish to bring your candidates to West Springfield to interview or to meet with you. Now, if they're regional candidates or local candidates, you know, you're no more than two hours away from anyplace else in Massachusetts. They'll drive at no expense. But if you've got somebody out of state that is attractive and you want to bring them in, that would be an expense that you'd have to foot. There's some travel, otherwise for us, but there's not a lot of it because we're generally here.
Right. So in essence, I guess what MASC does is we prioritize our school committees. We exist only for and because of you. And we try to tailor, what we do is we do tailor the service so that school committee members, your entire school community, insofar as we're able to, is happy with the process. They feel that they've been included, they've been heard and listened to, and all that information's been shared with you. We work hard with our candidates so that they feel comfortable with the process. They feel that we're treating them respectfully and honestly and openly as well.
I will say, in Nancy's defense, I kind of pushed for us to kind of do it internally. And then when she brought up all the listening sessions and the committees, and if I was going to do all those things, I realized that I wasn't. We should probably bring someone else in to do it.
There's a lot of time initially put into the process, because your community wants to feel that their opinions are valued in the process. They're sending their children to you. And/or they're paying, you know, their fair share of the taxes that come to the schools. It's an important piece.
Can I ask one more? After we, if we accept and sign a contract, what, how long does it take from beginning to end, usually?
Well, you could be done by early January. You could be done sooner if you wanted to take some steps to expedite the process. For example, you will probably want to have a search committee. Your search committee may contain a minority of school committee members. I personally would encourage you to have the school committee represented on the search committee. Because when the school committee is participating in the search committee, some of the bad behaviors don't ensue. In other words, people don't try to hijack the agenda. Members of the committee don't try to bully other members of the committee. Sometimes the different interests in a community can be represented, and they can weigh heavily in terms of how people try to influence each other. But when the school committee's represented on the search committee, everyone knows that the school committee's representative is participating and keeping things fair and square. You can expedite the process by having a smaller, rather than a larger, search committee, although a lot of people may want to be on it. The more people on the search committee, the more difficulty you will have herding everyone together to meet. So it's not unusual for a search committee, let's say of 11 people or 13 people, to be appointed. And then they come for orientation, and somebody says, well, I can't meet on Mondays, and I work in Worcester and I can't get here until seven o'clock, and I'm definitely not meeting on weekends, or I have to go to Florida for two weeks and I'm not going to be here. And suddenly, it takes you three or four weeks to get your interviews done. So by having an expedited search committee, you can move up the timetable a bit. But you definitely want to give yourself at least four weeks for candidates to apply. And the superintendent aspirant lot is a procrastinating lot. So expect 90% of your applicants to come in in the last week, no matter what you do. But you're going to need time to talk to people, and they're going to need time to talk to people and reach out a network to get people to come in. Once the search- Once the search committee gets to work, if they can work quickly and get their recommendations to the school committee by the end of November, then you could expedite your work and get your interviews done by mid-November. We've provided you with a draft timeline in a document which you could look at, and you could be done in early January, and the sooner you're done, the more likely you will have your pick of the candidates who are out there looking. Because if you start this process in February to fill the position in July, the best of the candidates will already be hired by the time you're ready to go. So as I say, it takes about three months, it can take more, it can take less, and sometimes weather is a factor, if you schedule interviews and you have to cancel them.
And once the search committee's identified, we like to orient them early on so that they understand that while there is a commitment of time, it's in a specific period, a block of time, so it isn't, it isn't sort of carried out through, over the course of months, it's more like the course of weeks. And getting them oriented early, if someone does have time commitments that they cannot keep, they'll drop early in the process, and you'd have the opportunity to replace them on the search committee if need be.
All right, any other questions? With that, do I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the proposal from MASC to conduct the Superintendent Search in an amount not to exceed $9,999, subject to negotiation of contract terms by the town attorney.
Second.
The motion, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you. We really all will get to know each other quite well over the course of this process.
And Mr. Chairman, I just want to, one last comment that we did not include. Our obligation to you is to have a superintendent hired to a permanent contract, and if that superintendent doesn't stay, we do it over. But we don't bill you until you have a signed contract. So if at any point you're not happy with the way things are going, you want to start over, or you want to find somebody else, we will not consider you to have any obligation to us unless or until you have a signed contract with the superintendent.
Should have started with that.
Well, you've been, you've been paying us dues for 75 years, so we certainly value your membership rather than, much more than we would value any particular given service at any given moment.
Well, I know Nancy has your direct line, pretty much, too, so.
You'll have our cell phone number.
Thank you, Glenn, I appreciate it.
And we talk a lot, we really will.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none. Our next school committee meeting will be September 27th, a workshop at 6:00 PM, agenda to be posted. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Any objection? We are adjourned. Thank you.